Good evening, everyone. It's about 7:00. My name is Richard Burke and I call this meeting of the Tuolton Valley Water District Board of Commissioners to order. First item of business is reports by the Chief Executive Officer and management staff.
Good evening, President Burke. Commissioners, a pleasure to be here this evening. We will start, as we always do, with Safety Minute. And this month, Dave Kraska from the Willamette Water Supply Program is up on Safety Minute.
Thank you, Mark. So tonight's Safety Moment is about smoke alarms and fire extinguisher recalls. So all of us know that smoke alarms and fire extinguishers are good, critical home safety items that we know to shop for the right type, for the right service, push to test the smoke detectors from time to time, and change the batteries when they're out, and verify the charge of your fire extinguishers, but also sometimes you need to check for recalls as well. It turns out that Kita brand smoke detectors and CO detectors that have been built for about the last about five and a half years, and surprisingly, fire extinguishers that were built for the last 44 years are subject to some recall. And that's not a typo, the last 44 years of fire extinguishers. So recommend you go to the kita.com website and click on either of the bottom two notices there to check on whether your smoke detector or CO detector or fire extinguisher are subject to these recalls. So the danger associated with the CO and smoke detector is that when the alarm reaches its end of life, it does a chirp every 30 seconds, like when the battery is dead. And if you would have just changed the battery and then pushed to test, what would happen is the chirp would go away, but the system would also be non-functional. It would no longer detect smoke or carbon monoxide. So it needs to be replaced. Similarly, or in a different sort of vein, the danger associated with these types of fire extinguishers that look like this, with the straight plastic handle, they can become clogged and require excessive force to discharge. They can fail to activate during a fire emergency, and they can also, the nozzle can detach, basically becoming a projectile and raising its own danger. So it needs to be replaced as well. So in summary, recommend if you have any Kita brand smoke detectors, CO detectors, or fire extinguishers, go to the website, click on the links, and follow the instructions to get replacement equipment. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Dave. A few updates this evening. Over the past Martin Luther King Weekend, the district's information technology staff spent some time successfully restructuring and reconfiguring the district's existing computer network. This has been a long-planned and scheduled activity that, including replacing essentially all of the computer switches and related devices, including some servers, and updating all the wiring to all of those devices to conform to new standards and better implement technology that will improve the reliability, efficiency, and security of the district's network. While this might sound a little bit like inside baseball in terms of district technology, I think it's very notable that this activity was completed with essentially no impact to the district's customers, including having set up essentially a, what they called dummy website that allowed customers to at least be able to see that we were here, but that we didn't have full function of the website for a short period of time. I just simply wanted to acknowledge Tim Boylan, our IT Director, and his entire team that included not just the technology staff, but also communication staff, to, they did an amazing job in both planning, coordinating, and executing this work, and again, to make it all happen with no change in our, the service to our customers or the quality of service that we provided. So it was a really nice job. And in fact, I think Tim is going to be here next month to be able to provide an update on some of this work. Switching gears, at the TVWD September Board Meeting, I'd explained that the Oregon Health Authority, or OHA, was considering making amendments to the Oregon Administrative Rules that would require water providers to include a seismic risk assessment as part of water system master plans. Based on the board's feedback and the district's experience of having completed a seismic risk assessment as part of our master plan in 2014, the district adopted a very aggressive posture in working with OHA, as well as the Water Utility Council of Oregon, to push forward and not only provide comments, but actually provide suggested language for that proposed rule. I'm here tonight to report that last week, the Oregon Health Authority moved forward with the proposed rule requiring most water systems to conduct a seismic risk assessment. We think that new rule not only reflects our hard work, but will result in significant benefits in improving the preparedness and resilience of water systems throughout the state. So I felt like it was a major accomplishment based on some of the work that we've done. Just a heads up that our annual joint meeting with the Hillsborough Utilities Commission is scheduled for Wednesday, March 14th, at 5:45 PM right here. You'll be getting more information about that and make sure that we have that on your schedules. Dan Barstow. Dan is a 21-year employee with the district's accounting team. Dan is going to be retiring at the end of the month, so a couple of weeks. Dan has a remarkable mind for numbers. If you want to understand what duration in year is, years is in seconds, Dan basically has those numbers off the top of his head. He's kind of a savant when it comes to numbers and facts and figures, and so we're going to miss him a lot at many levels. And I wanted to make sure the commissioners are invited to attend Dan's farewell celebration on Tuesday, January 30th, at 4:00 PM right here. I will be out of the office Thursday and Friday this week, attending a Water Research Foundation Board Meeting in Savannah, Georgia. While I'm gone, our Chief Engineer, Carrie Pack, will be acting in capacity for the CEO. I will be checking email occasionally and always available by cellphone if anything comes up while I'm gone. I'll be back in the office on Monday, the 22nd.
I'm sorry, Mark. On the celebration on the 30th, what time is that going to be?
4:00 PM.
Oh, I missed that. I'm sorry. Thank you.
No problem. And now, in keeping with the district's mission to provide our community with quality water and customer service, Dave Kraska is going to provide an update on the Willamette Water Supply Program. Take it away, Dave.
Forgot temporarily, I had two speaking points tonight. So, department report for this month, what I'm going to share with you is one of the, was one of 12, it was one of the 12 agenda items that we shared at the December Executive Committee Meeting as part of the Willamette Water Supply Program. So it'll give you an idea of the level of information that we provide to Mark in terms of our program progress during the course of a month. We always do a program summary update as far as what we've accomplished for the month and our look ahead for the next month, and it looks something like this. We talk about our key accomplishments, forward focus, what we're going to be working on for the following month, and then also a construction update of whatever we've been building over the past month. In terms of key accomplishments, I won't go over this entire description here, but all of these topics we go over in the executive committee meeting, and it covers all the things that have taken place over the last month. The next slide goes over all the projects that we're working on. In summary, we just basically highlight where they're at in terms of the level of design completion and whether they're under construction, and just how far we're proceeding. We thought this was kind of a good overall way of showing our progress, and obviously this will turn to darker and darker green as the years go by. We look ahead as far as like, what is the team working on right at this moment? And of the entire staff and the program office, these are all the higher priority topics that the team is working on, all of those covered in red. The ones that are in purple and blue are also important, but not as the higher priority ones that we're currently focused on. And then our forward focus, all of these are the items that we're working on for the following month, so that would actually be January, because this report was done in December. Next, we talk about our construction update, and so we go through all the projects. Right now, we just have three. So we have the Kinsman Road Project, PLM 2. We have PLM 3, the 124th Extension Project we're doing with Washington County. And then PLW 1.1, at the top there, South Hillsborough work. So for PLM 2, we talk about whether we're doing the project in terms of a partnership, who is the contractor, who is the design engineer, and what are the current and planned activities. So on PLM 2, we're pretty much just wrapping that one up. So we're just working on fencing, preliminary deficiency list, and final submittals. We're pretty close to done with that one. Here's a couple of construction photos, basically just showing basically completed project. We have a utility vault there, the completed sidewalk with our test stations just outside the sidewalk there. In terms of the progress status, on construction costs, we're about 97.4% of the project budget, with only 70.8% of the schedule spent. So that means that we're almost done with the project, but well, well ahead of schedule. It's been a very, very good project. And the change orders have been low as well. Notable topics on partner coordination, potential claims, delivery challenges, across the board, this has been a pretty clean project. We really haven't had any problems with any of those. Moving on to PLM 3, so again, this is the 124th Avenue Extension Project. A lot more activity on that one. We're just starting to begin to lay the pipe there. Well, we've actually completed 1,100 feet of pipe, and we're installing air vaults and also coordinating with the natural gas line installation in Tonquin Road. And so accordingly, here's some of the construction photos. Commissioner Doan, this probably looks familiar to you from the tour that we did back in December, the size of the 66-inch inline vault, our butterfly valve there in the picture on the left-hand side, and then the vault that's for our air leaf valve, and then also some of the pipeline installation in the lower right-hand photo there.
Excuse me.
Yes.
What does one of those valves cost?
Oh, boy. North of $100,000.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I was afraid you were going to ask me how much they weigh. I would have to say a lot. So this one, in terms of progress status, much lower on the spend, only 12.7% of the spend, a lot more, the construction schedule has elapsed. And that's okay, because the front end of this project was all roadway construction. It was drilling and blasting and creating, the gruff grading for the road. But actually, the time is getting short on this one, and it is getting a bit critical, but so far still okay. Change orders are higher on this one, and actually, for the large part, that's owner-initiated changes. Some of the changes on this one are associated with our moving the water treatment plant out of Wilsonville and up to the Sherwood area, so we had to make some modifications to the pipeline that created some of the change orders you see reflected here. Notable topics here, so far, as I mentioned, Washington County is a little concerned with the overall schedule. The contractor, though, is confident they'll be able to complete on time. We're working through some issues in terms of unforeseen conditions with the contractor. And again, delivery challenges, the only one is the slow progress on the pipeline work, but we think we're moving along okay. And finally, PLW 1.1, that's the pipeline in South Hillsborough. That one as well, we're wrapping up a little bit, not quite as quickly as Kinsman Road, but we're getting there. We have the TV Highway turnout, the 30-inch pipeline and vaults, air leaf vault. And we're fixing a gasket issue on the north end. They had a gasket failure on one of the joints, which created a challenge for their pressure test that they weren't able to complete successfully, so they had to change and replace the gaskets on the pipeline to fix that. This shows some of the current construction photos, or construction photos from about a month ago, showing some of the vault installation, and you can see some of the pipeline installation there on the lower right. And this is what we'd call our, even though it's a large, large pipe, it's still some of the smaller pipe that we're installing on the program. This one, we're at 75% complete in construction cost, but we've completed all of the schedule. And that's due to some of the contractors' issues with, related to some of the gasket installation that they've been fixing and some of the equipment delivery. So all is going to be completed okay, and so far, there's no conflicts with the contractor on schedule. And change orders are excellent on this one, very, very low. Notable topics on this one, partner coordination, everything's okay, potential claims, none, and delivery challenges, just a bit behind schedule in dealing with some of the gasket issues and delivery of equipment. And that's the completion. That was a very, very quick spin through one of our progress reports that we share at the EC meetings. I'd be glad to take any questions you might have.
My head is spinning.
Sorry about that.
I would assure you that during the executive committee meeting briefing, Dave and the team spends probably about a half an hour going through this material, and we grill them with questions and look for more information. So we go through it very thoroughly as opposed to just that high-level, quick spin.
Well, what it seems like is that things are on track. There's a blip here, blip there, but everything's where it's supposed to be.
I would say yes, and I think the other thing you can draw from this report is how large, complex, and challenging this work is, and some of the site conditions, the size and complexity of the materials that we're installing, and we just have some remarkable people doing some incredible work.
Thank you for your good work. Are there any other questions?
My question, are you happy and comfortable with the way things are going?
I'm excited and happy with how things are going. I don't ever plan to be comfortable with how things are going. When we're all complete and done, and everything is operational, and it's successfully completed, then I'll be happy.
Then it's Miller time.
Then comes out the Dom Perignon.
Not before.
Exactly. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I am really impressed with the level of attention to detail in managing all of these projects so tightly, because especially on such big-ticket items, it's real easy for those change orders and the schedules to slip. And I really appreciate the good work your team is doing.
You hire good people, Mark. Anything else? Okay, thank you very much.
And that would conclude the management staff report this evening.
Okay, very good. The next item on the agenda is Commissioner Communications, reports of meetings attended, topics to be raised by the commissioners. I'll start, because mine is very simple to report tonight. I have two meetings to report, tonight's meeting and then on the 8th, the monthly meeting with Vice President Bagnall and our CEO. Those are my meetings. Boy, without Commissioner Doug in here, Commissioner Doan, you look a long ways away. So let's go to you next.
All right, there's tonight's meeting. I met with Mark yesterday to discuss a series of issues. The Joint Water Commission and the Barney Joint Operating Commission was on January 12th, and on January 11, I went to a meeting called by the City of Wilsonville to discuss a pipeline that crosses the Willamette. And that's it.
Okay. Very good. Commissioner Schmidt.
I had a busy month. I also attended the Joint Water Commission meeting with Commissioner Doan at tonight's meeting.
Commissioner Bagnall.
Last for me. On the 9th, I attended the Agenda Planning Meeting with President Burke and our CEO. On the 12th, the Barney Reservoir and Joint Water Commission Meeting, where we talked about the audit and about the plant expansion update and water rights. And then, of course, tonight's meeting for district business.
Very good. Thank you all. The next item on the agenda is public comment. This time is set aside for persons wishing to address the board on items that are on the consent agenda and matters not on the agenda. Additional public comment will be invited on agenda items as they are presented. Each person is limited to five minutes unless an extension is granted by the board. Should three or more people testify on the same topic, each person will be limited to three minutes. The last clause seems unlikely to be invoked, as I have one request for public comment, and I would be honored if Ms. Wendy Paris would come on up and state your, for the record, state your name and address, and would love to hear whatever you have to say tonight.
For listening to me tonight, my name is Wendy Paris. I am a Tuolton Valley Water District resident. We live at 3510 Northwest 120th Avenue. For 20 years, we'd been district members and had a wonderful experience with our water quality and our water service. On January 9th, we had the difficult experience of hooking up to a new water meter and water line. West Hills Development is putting in Thompson Woods, which I'm sure staff is somewhat familiar with. It's a 235-home subdivision that is directly across the street from us. And as part of that, water line, new water lines are being brought in. We received our old water from a meter located up on Thompson Road, which was about 100 yards from our property. The new meter is right next to our property now on 120th. And when we returned from being away for the holidays after the first of the year, the meter was installed, and we advised staff, we were planning on hooking up to it, and we obtained a permit through Washington County to do the hookup, advised staff about it, and the contractor who's doing the earthwork, NEI, was aware we were going to hook up. Staff came out to remove the lock so we could check, to make sure we had no leaks in the line before we had a final inspection, and that was Mike Etienne. I'm probably saying his name wrong, but you need about 100 more of him. He was wonderful. He came out, removed the lock, said, "Call me, I'll come back, and I'll remove your meter on Thompson, make sure everything's okay." We went to do the hookup. It was late in the day on the 9th, and we turned the water on, the meter coming into our line, and it was nothing. There was no water. There was nothing. I called Mike, we called the contractor, they rushed out. Apparently, after you had certified the lines, the contractor or someone turned off the water. Perhaps didn't report it to Tuolton Valley, that's my suspicion by Mike's surprise, but I don't know that for a fact. They came out searching for the valve boxes to turn everything back on, some of which were actually buried and they had to dig up so they could turn the water back on. Mike did a great job of opening the hydrant, disconnecting our meters so that we had an opportunity not to blow out everything at our house because of all the air, and finally said, they finally got water flowing in there, and after a bit, he said, "It's safe to do this." He hooked the meter back up and was on his way, and we thanked him. It was probably 5:00 on Tuesday or so. Went in the house, my husband took a shower and came downstairs and said, "Something smells really bad." And I went upstairs into the shower, and there was just a horrific odor. The water had a metallic, some kind of taste, and it smelled chemically. And I'm not a chemist, and I may be using the wrong term with the idea of chemical, but it, we thought maybe it was chlorine that was left in from the certification, but we didn't know. Two days later, my shower has the worst white scale. You would think I don't know how to clean a house or clean a shower. I've never seen anything like this underneath the showerheads. We contacted staff on Wednesday. They told us to open all the water up in the house, and they sent someone to flush the lines. My husband and I both got very ill, had very bad GI issues for the last week, are still in the process of getting over it. It still didn't help after the flushing, and we asked to have somebody look at it again. We finally got ahold of someone in water quality, and they said they could test the water on Friday. Initially, the reaction was, "We didn't tell you to hook up to the meter. You're the one that wanted to hook up. Okay, why'd you put the meter there? Why didn't you tell us there was an issue? We could have waited." So we had a bad initial reaction. The water was tested. We got a call Saturday saying there was no bacteria in the water.
Excuse me, Ms. Paris, does anyone object if we extend so she can complete her testimony?
I'm sorry.
No, 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 you're fine.
I'm trying to give you a good background.
Go ahead, anyway. Thank you.
The tech that came out Friday morning indicated the pH was within EPA limits, but higher than what you typically like to see as a district, and said that could have been the issue or the smell. Apparently, minerals or alkali or high pH could have given us a reaction, but she wasn't positive. She said there were a number of tests she wanted to run, but she didn't have the authority to do it and was coming back to talk to her boss. When we got the call Saturday, we were told there's no bacteria. When we asked about what else is in there, what's the pH, we didn't get any response. And before the testing, we were told we would get a copy of those results. We still haven't received a copy of the results. I called the water quality person, Mr. Carrie, and left him a message Tuesday. I still don't have a return phone call. I asked him, I explained that I wanted to know what testing was done besides bacteria. We never thought bacteria was in the water. It had a unique smell to it that just didn't seem like that. We're a little, obviously, upset with this. I'd like to just have, I'd like to know what's in my shower. I'd like to know if I can spray something on it to clean it, and I'm afraid to do that because I don't know what it is. The water still has a slight smell to it. The taste has improved. We have flushed the water out several different times by just leaving it run. We're concerned about our hot water heater. We've drained it once, but we don't know if that's got the smell or chemical or whatever it is inside it. We are also on a septic system. I don't know what just flushed into my septic system by opening all my faucets and letting everything run into it. So we would just like some answers, and if the issue is it's a new water line and it needs to be flushed more, great, can we make that happen? If the issue is it's not a good idea to be the only uphill person on the water line until they get the subdivision built out, then tell us and give us our meter back and lock this one up, and we'll hook back, I mean, we'll get hooked up to that old line, which, the quality of which was fine. But we don't understand why, when we asked about it, what we initially got, not from Ms. Pack and her group, but from the quality people, were, you know, "You're the one that pushed this. You did this. You hooked up." And I was like, "We didn't do anything, and we don't, we can't get the results. We don't know what was tested for, and we understand there may, you know, the contractor may have played an issue in this." But I just want the water I used to have back and to know what that is so that we can deal with what's in our household and whether it is going to be something that we have to deal with in our septic or not. And we, we're just here to ask for help and say, "Can we either get our old meter back or can you help with this, please?"
Yeah. When you flushed your system, did you flush, turn on hose bibs too?
Yes.
Okay.
We turned every faucet, every hose bib, everything we could.
I have a little, I have a little background on, first of all, let me thank you for offering your testimony, and I think we're all on the same page here with you. You'll be glad to know that staff is very concerned about this. At the very highest level, this was brought to my attention by staff.
Thank you.
And they are concerned about it. I don't have all of the details that are pertinent to this, but I understand that at least part of this had to do with coordination between the contractor, TVWD, and some of the problems that exist when a new subdivision is being put in. But I've asked staff to work with you in resolving this. Maybe our CEO would like to say something about this, but I would really like to encourage you to work with staff to resolve this. They want this resolved. We want this resolved. You want this resolved, and we're going to get it fixed. We've had, you know, every once in a while, we have a problem of this ilk before, and we're going to get this resolved. Do you have anything you'd like to add?
I would just simply echo those comments. Again, you know, my apologies, apologies on behalf of the entire organization in terms of not providing the exceptional customer service that we pride ourselves on. That's not how we conduct business, and we're going to figure out what's wrong and how to make it right, not just for you, but so we don't let this happen again. I'm going to turn it over to Carrie Pack in terms of figuring out what's the right solution, and if it makes sense to replace the meter off of Thompson.
She's our chief engineer.
Yes.
Yeah. We can make that happen very quickly to get sort of things back to where they were. Your question and concern related to what's accumulated in your shower and what this did to your septic tank, I mean, the good news is probably nothing much, and it's all very benign, but I want to find out what the results showed and so that we can get that taken care of, give you the information so that you can follow up and put your mind at ease.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have on the docket tonight, the consent agenda. These are items that are routine and may be approved in one motion without separate discussion, though any board member may ask that one or more items be separated for separate action. On the consent agenda tonight is approval of the December 20th, 2017 regular meeting minutes, and I think that's it. According to this, it's a very simple consent agenda. So without objection, I'll approve the consent agenda. Seeing no objection?
No objection.
It's approved. Okay. We'll go to the business agenda. We'll begin by considering adoption of Resolution Number 01-18, a resolution adopting the investment policy for the Tuolton Valley Water District.
If I could, we missed an item.
Did we miss an item?
Public hearing related to consent. Public hearing related to considering the motion to approve by ordinance, the Willamette Intake Facilities IGA.
I don't have that here on this. Give me a moment. Let me get my papers right here.
Yeah, it's just after public comment?
Oh, yes. Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay, I'm out of order. I don't get to declare myself out of order very often, so I'll do that now. Okay, so what I will do is recess the current meeting. And now we will go into a public hearing to consider approving a motion to be read by title only, the draft ordinance approving the Willamette Intake Facilities Intergovernmental Agreement to Form the Willamette Intake Facilities Commission, an intergovernmental entity formed under ORS Chapter 190 between Tuolton Valley Water District and the cities of Hillsborough, Sherwood, Beaverton, Tigard, and Wilsonville, and conduct a public hearing to receive oral testimony or written comments, close the hearing, and direct the ordinance be brought back for a second reading and adoption at the February 21st, 2018 board meeting. So I now declare the hearing open.
So we will have a staff report, but let me provide just a couple of introductory comments. I keep talking about reaching major milestones in the Willamette Water Supply Program. This is a huge one, just from the standpoint of we have spent the last three years as staff negotiating this agreement for essentially establishing the joint ownership, operation, and maintenance of the intake facilities with our six partners, five partners in TVWD. And Clark is going to provide a lot more detail on this. But essentially, this now creates the partnership for the intake to take water off of the river and move forward with that process of, of now creating the water that will wind up flowing, at least raw water, unfinished treated, unfinished water, that will then find its way to our treatment plant. So this partnership agreement, we believe, will create the entity that will last for truly generations to come in terms of allowing our continued use, operation, and maintenance of that facility. So it's a darn big deal. I would also acknowledge that this was very much a team effort. I had the pleasure of going to meetings every other week with our elite team that included Paul Matthews and Clark Balfour. And again, sort of our peers from each of the other five partners in this whole process. So basically 20 of us in a room negotiating this agreement over the past three years every other week. With that, I will turn it over to Clark and give you all of the details. I almost said gory details, but that would sort of create the wrong appearance. But all the details associated with this proposed agreement.
Thank you, Mark. So I'll ask President Burke, do you, do you want to have a motion to read the ordinance by title only first, or do you want to go through the staff report?
Let's do the, let's do the motion first. So I'll entertain a motion to read the ordinance by title.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. Passes for zero.
All right. Ordinance number 01-18, an ordinance approving the Willamette Intake Facilities Intergovernmental Agreement to Form the Willamette Intake Facilities Commission, an intergovernmental entity formed under ORS Chapter 190 between Tuolton Valley Water District and the cities of Hillsborough, Sherwood, Beaverton, Tigard, and Wilsonville. So with that, this is the first reading of this ordinance to adopt the, what we call the WIF IGA, to create the, the Willamette Intake Facilities Commission. We've talked about this before. You've had, you've had various drafts of this agreement. Now you have a final agreement. The PowerPoint that you're about to see, we've, we provided to you earlier, and we can run through this now in, in hopefully a fairly abbreviated fashion, but certainly stop if you have any questions or concerns. The idea is that we will have a first reading tonight, a public hearing, which you opened. We don't seem to have anyone here to testify right now, but they'll have an opportunity at the February meeting because then we'll bring it back for a second reading and hopefully adoption at that point. Other, the other parties to this are also going through a similar process. We all seem to be on the same approval and adoption schedule. We don't anticipate any changes, but if there are, they would probably be very insignificant at this point. And so we don't see any impediments to you hearing this tonight, considering it, and then coming back in February for final adoption. So with that, we can talk about what is this. And as we've said before, this agreement is the, for ownership, management, maintenance, repair, construction, expansion, all those things to get water to the water treatment plant for the WIF. I am proud to say that we have six parties. As Mark said, it's a, it, it was a crowded room in some respects. And I am very proud that we have 22 whereas clauses. I think that's a record. I'm not sure. We'll have to go back through. But in any event, it's 60 pages of fun reading, plus we have all the exhibits. So anytime you want to have a book club with me, let me know. We can go through it together. So as we said, this is an agreement between Tuolton Valley Water District and various municipal entities who are interested in, in participating in the Willamette Water Supply, although with respect to Wilsonville and Sherwood, they already are using the, what we call the Willamette River Water Treatment Plant in Wilsonville. They will not be part of the, the Willamette Water Supply System. The interesting thing about this agreement is we define what the WIF assets are, but in order to do that, we also have to, to define what is not in the WIF. And so we have what's in and what's out. And that's all important because it all comes to what we call the system separation point, which is a, a magical place, right now probably in Dave's mind, more than, than, you know, in a solid physical thing that you can grab. But the, the point where the system separates and we go either to the Willamette River Water Treatment Plant that, that we own an interest in as well, or to our new plant that's going to be constructed in Sherwood. Governance, six-member board, where each entity appoints a person. We also have an alternate in case that person can't serve. We're going to have the board manage the business affairs. It's going to appoint a managing agency. And we had a lot of discussion about voting, but essentially, in order to give people the peace of mind that, that no one would be placed at a huge disadvantage, we came up with a, with a voting factor that for most decisions, it will be five out of six members. You're going to have to work very hard, or hard at least, to maintain relationships and keep consensus to get to decisions. There are some things that require unanimity, but they are, are few. The next probably important point is that for all intents and purposes, this is going to be run by the managing agency. And speak now or forever hold your peace, because the managing agency is you. And it's going to be Dave and his staff and Mark. So, but this, we have to thread a needle. Remember that, that we're working on expansion of the facility? So until 2026, when everything comes online, we have to, we have to balance a couple of things. Wilsonville and Sherwood still need to get water. So this agreement provides that until 2026, Wilsonville will manage their portion of the WIF to assure that water gets into their plant for use with their citizens and those of Sherwood. On the, at the same time, we're going to be doing everything else, plus constructing the, the upgrade and expansion part of this, so that in 2026, it all comes under Tuolton Valley's umbrella. And Tuolton Valley at that point, from 2026 to 2032, will be the managing agency for the WIF, to manage and make sure water's delivered to both plants. Now, what happens in 2032? That becomes a decision point for the, for the commission as to whether or not Tuolton Valley wants to continue as the managing agency, or if some other change is going to be made. And we have process throughout this document as to how that managing agency is going to be selected and retained and how they're going to function. What happens right now? Well, in some of the exhibits, we have a, we're developing an annual work plan. We're working out a staffing plan, which you'll see later. And then also, we're going up with the, we're putting together the initial management plan. We have financial procedures in place. So we're really standing this thing up right now. And so while you, we may see this agreement and people are going to sign, there's a lot of work going on right now to, to be ready to implement as soon as we get to that final adoption process. Now, this is, this is an interesting chart, and it probably looks more complicated than it really is. But with, in various parts of the agreement, you, we talk about committees. We have the WIF Operations Committee. We have the WIF Finance Committee. We have other committees. We have a Management Committee. But I think that it's, it's pretty easy to see that all of those deal with, with various disciplines or functions to provide information or recommendations that ultimately flow through to Tuolton Valley as the managing agency. And from there, on to the Board of Commissioners. So, you know, it, it, it is, it's a little tall, I guess, when you look at it in that regard. We usually have flatter organizational structures, but this one ultimately feeds to the managing agency and, and then from there, you know, to be, to be put in line for decision making. This one might be a little hard to see, but I think that you can see it on your, on your screens there. The expansion and upgrade. We're going to go from 120 to 150 million gallons a day. As I said earlier, it's going to be managed by Tuolton Valley and the Willamette Water Supply Program. But at the end of the day, these are the anticipated capacities that we'll have. And as you can see, Tuolton Valley will have 59.1 million gallons, or 39, a little over 39% interest. And the other parties will have varying interest below that. We have existing assets right now. We have, we have facilities that, that get us to the, the 70 million gallon limit for the screens, but 120 million gallons on the intake, pipe, wet well, all those sorts of things. We have to provide for the purchase and sale of those by those folks who are coming in. So what this chart shows you is what those other entities are going to purchase from Tuolton Valley to give them that base, which will then be expanded and upgraded by Dave to get from this to the 150. So these are the buy-in costs for the existing facilities. Now, I don't have a slide for what we think the anticipated cost to get to the 150 million gallons, plus the seismic improvements, plus everything else. But in your materials, that's in Exhibit 11. And that shows what's going to happen in order to, to get us, to get us to the promised land and to bring that water home.
The promised land.
To the treatment plant. And, and although, you know, those numbers, probably those numbers change for you, Dave, every day. But in any event, if you're looking for that, that next step, Exhibit 11 is where you would need to look. The key for us is, we, we're very confident that we're going to get to 150 million gallons a day. But there may be some, there may be some factors that cause us not to get there. We built into this a minimum guarantee that Tuolton Valley will always have 56 and a half million gallons out of this intake facility. Similarly, Wilsonville will always have 20, and Sherwood will always have five. Why? Because we're already owners in this. And so we're trying to preserve that, that key investment for us. If, if for some reason, the numbers are less than 150, we will always have those numbers. And the others, the newcomers, will share in that, in that ratable reduction. As I said, we've got a bunch of committees. I don't think we need to go through this, but this is, this is a likely roster that will, of folks that will populate these various committees as we go through, and also what we think that these committees are going to perform. Finances. Paul Matthews worked very, very hard on this, and he deserves a lot of credit. So the financial reporting and budget approval process was, I, I will say, one of the more painful experiences of this. But, but we've got it. And, and part of it was, how do we prepare material? How do we get it out? How do we get input from everybody? And then how do we ultimately get it to the commission for review and approval, and then to the individual boards or councils to make their annual budget appropriations and to move on? So I think that we've, I think that we've nailed this. I think we have it. It may appear to have a lot of arrows running back and forth, but I, I think that with our schedule and the way that Paul has, has developed the financial procedures, I think this is going to work very well. Land. It always helps to have land to build things on. So we're going to have two things out of this. One is, the WIF commission will be granted an easement by us, because we're a current owner of the Wilsonville property and Wilsonville, to this larger commission, also of which we're, we're going to be a party, to have the intake, the expanded intake footprint and to do our work now and over time. From there, from the system separation point that I talked about earlier, we're going to have an easement for the Willamette Water Supply System Pipeline to then exit that property and come north to the Sherwood area. Water rights. Each party's responsible to bring their own water rights to the table. In our case, we're using our Willamette River Water Coalition right, which, if you recall, is the 1973 permit that Tuolton Valley obtained. And we have provided in our WRWC agreements that that is shared by Sherwood and Tigard, as well as us. And Tuolton also has a piece, but Tuolton is not participating at this point. So there's something there for them if and when they decide to do something, and they may never do something. We've already talked about the various plans that are going to be developed, but very quickly, there'll be an ops plan, a curtailment plan, an emergency response plan, capital improvement plans, probably a plan to make plans. I don't know. But in any event, I, I think that we've got a fairly comprehensive set of, of documents that we're going to develop and things that are going to require a lot of thought and input over time. Sad to say, people don't always stay together. And so we've also provided for a withdrawal process, which, you know, has notice, it has rights of first offer and sale. We have continued, as we've discussed in the past, we've continued our, our special provisions that we've had with our existing Wilsonville plant to carry through on this intake facility. So, you know, we, we are in a little different bucket along with Wilsonville in terms of, if we wanted to sell or transfer something, we'd have to go through a few extra steps on how we make our offers. But quite honestly, we really don't see us doing that. We're here in the, for the long haul. So while it's there, we don't anticipate that we're going to use it. We have leasing provisions, as we've had in other cooperative ventures, particularly the Joint Water Commission. We've expanded it a little bit over the Joint Water Commission to have a couple of things. One, firm leases, that's what we have now. Interruptable leases, which is, is new. That's not something that we have in the Joint Water Commission, but it's a, it's a, an element of flexibility that we added here, similar to our Portland contract that has an interruptible water component. And then we've also provided for a surplus capacity pool. There may be water that is available, that was nominated for lease, that is not actually under lease. And so that gives us some flexibility that if, if it's already put in the, in the pot, we should be able to use it to make sure that, you know, that helps people avoid overuse issues. And, and those provisions which follow are, you know, overusing your capacity share. But if it's on a temporary basis, if it's a daily sort of thing, a spot kind of thing, that's where this surplus capacity pool comes into play. Of course, what's an agreement without default and performance issues? And we have them. But this time, we, we tried to have some remedies that, that maybe cause people to come into compliance. I mean, that's really what we're, we're all about here, right? If we're going to, if somebody gets a foul of the agreement, it's often better to try to have remedies that bring them back into compliance. So if somebody has done something wrong, you know, and after you've gone through a dispute resolution process, well, during that time, and maybe even after that dispute resolution, you could lose your voting privileges. Certainly, you're responsible for the monetary losses that you cause. And we also have a provision for termination of water service. Now, that just doesn't mean somebody is out turning a valve. But what it does mean is if, if you have another source and you can get all your water from that source, yeah, the valve can be turned off as to you. If you don't have another source, or if your other sources aren't really sufficient to get you where you need to go, then we, we can ratchet you down to a non-peak season average use. And, and that means that if, if you're hitting this, your default period during the summer, you're going to have to put your folks on some kind of a curtailment. Because you're not going to have, you're going to have enough water to get by, but you're not going to have enough water to do a lot of other things that you might like to do during that peak season. So hopefully, those are the kinds of things that bring, bring people into line and that we can have a functioning agreement. So with that, I think we're, I think we're finished with the, the overall explanation of the agreement and... and ready to bring it back to you later, subject to your questions right now.
I just wanted to double-check. I think I may have asked this before, but if one member loses their voting privileges, that doesn't mean we still need five out of six. That means we need four out of six, right?
I should have covered that. Yes, we have an automatic adjustment provision. So I think the better way to look at it is less one. So if we have two people out, for example, then it would be those eligible to vote, less one. So, yes, thank you for that.
There's always a quorum.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, in fact, the quorum adjusts the same way.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you very much. I don't see any public to testify, so with that, I will close the hearing and reconvene the regular meeting. So we're back in the regular meeting magically, and we will now go to the consent agenda. There's only one item on the consent agenda tonight. Approve the December 20th, 2017 regular meeting minutes. What?
Did we approve it?
Yeah. All right, okay. I was out of order, but it passed. All right, now, so we'll go to the business agenda. Item A, consider adopting Resolution Number 01-18, a resolution adopting the investment policy for the Tuolton Valley Water District.
This is a function that we provide, that you conduct every year. Basically, we're obligated to do this, and so we're not making any significant changes, but we wanted to provide the board at least a quick update on the fact that we're really not making any changes to the investment policy, not to steal your thunder there, Todd. But if you have any questions, an opportunity to be able to get those questions answered. Take it away, Todd Burton.
Great. Thank you. Good evening, President Burke and members of the Board of Commissioners. My name is Todd Burton. The resolution before you, oops. Yes, thank you, Clark. I did want to say that the proposed Resolution 01-18 before you only has seven whereas clauses, which is the district average, so it's a much shorter resolution. And as Mark mentioned, this is really a bit of a housekeeping item for the district. Oregon statute requires that the board annually adopt an investment policy that allows the investment of securities for a term or maturities exceeding 18 months, and we have a number of investments in our portfolio, and our policy does provide that, which triggers the annual adoption by the board requirement. In fact, Oregon statute is very specific about the types of investments and securities that the district can make on behalf of the public funds that we manage. And on a monthly basis, we report to the board the performance, as well as information related to the district's investment activities through the monthly CEO report. We work very hard to ensure compliance with this policy, and we work with an investment advisory firm, Government Portfolio Advisors, which is an independent firm that assists, and fee-based, we pay them a fee, not, they don't earn anything on investing for us, they just provide advisory services to us. But they assist us with the management of our investment selections, they help us perform credit market research, portfolio management, and diversification of the investment policy. In 2009, the district's investment policy was approved by the Oregon State Treasury's Short Term Fund Board, also a requirement by statute to have that level of approval. And any annual updates that we propose to the board continue to comply with the Oregon Short Term Fund Board's guidance. Maybe if I flipped it this way, it would be correct. Wanted just to talk a little bit about investment objectives. It's very important. This is something we keep in mind daily when we're considering managing the investment policy, and these are really ranked in order of priority. Safety of the district's assets, liquidity to meet the ongoing operating and capital cash flow requirements of the district, risk management, where we select only highly rated securities, many of which have the backing of the U.S. federal government, and maintaining a diversified portfolio to the extent that state statute allows. We consider legality, which includes compliant with state law, as well as the provisions of the investment policy itself. And only after the district satisfies these four primary objectives do we consider rate of return in our decision-making. I always like to paraphrase the great philosopher Will Rogers when we think about our investments. Do we want the return of our money or the return on our money? Just a few quick comments on our current approach for balancing risk and return in today's market. For many years, and really since 2008, we had a very flat market. We were earning well under 1% with the district's investments portfolio. It was much more beneficial for us to do what we're doing now, which is put assets in the ground with the resources than holding them in an investment portfolio, and we continue to do that. Over the last couple of years, we've finally seen some movement in general interest rates, and if you followed the Federal Reserve Bank, you've seen they've made several moves to increase their benchmark rate, which rises, helps raise yields that we earn on our investments. I'm happy to report that we're now able to purchase investments that yield up to 1.5% to 2%. And one thing we do have to keep in mind is those interest rates do increase, it does increase interest rate risk to the market value of our portfolio. As interest rates rise, the portfolio is subject to change, a decline of market value. So we have a strategy around that. One is, we've stayed a little bit, we've stayed relatively shorter in the market, that reduces the interest rate risk, and we establish average maturity benchmarks, or what we also call the duration of the portfolio. Keeping that short does a couple of things. One, it allows us the cash flow we need to be able to make investments, particularly capital investments, and have the resources available for that. We're able to leverage the local government investment pool, which is managed by the State Treasurer's Office and is available to all local governments, including the district, and it offers a very competitive yield, and it also offers significant liquidity. We meet regularly with the district's investment advisor to review our strategy, to analyze our cash flow needs, to consider market trends in terms of what the market is doing at the present time, as well as to establish new benchmarks that we can track our investments by. We generally hold our investments to maturity, which allows us to earn the book yield of the investment. So if we buy a $3 million bond, we will get our $3 million back, plus whatever interest rate we earned during that time. As interest rates have increased, we have had idle cash, and we've been able to take advantage of these higher yields, so the yield of the portfolio has gone up over the last year or so. We do recognize that the interest, as interest rates rise, some of our securities may lose market value. However, we always consider earning the book yield of our investments, and by staying focused on the total portfolio yield of our portfolio and establishing these maturity benchmarks, it allows us to really not worry about any individual security we might be holding and its relative market value, but allows us just to maintain an investment profile within that benchmark or duration of the portfolio. So with all that, we have very significant, very minor changes to the investment policy. We want to correct the spelling of advisor, it is used throughout the policy, and we had a couple of different spellings, so we're correcting that. Since we have to take the policy to the board anyway, we want to improve its clarity and consistency. And we do have a term in the glossary that's called the prudent man rule, and we're going to change that to the prudent person rule, which really means the same thing, and that is whoever the trustee is for these public funds, which is the district and staff who are assigned to it, that we would make decisions that are prudent if you were an individual investor in terms of finding a good rate of return, capital preservation, and not taking undue risk. So we've changed the term of that. So with that, the staff recommendation is, the findings are that the investment policies in Resolution 01-18, which is attached as Exhibit A, complies with Oregon statute. It continues to follow Oregon's short-term fund board guidelines, incorporates some of the edits recommended by our investment advisor, and staff is recommending that the board approve Resolution 01-18 and adopt the investment policy for the district. That concludes the staff presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
I just want to comment that I appreciate the inclusive language. That, you know, yeah, get away from 16th century old English there. And thank you very much for doing that.
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner.
Anything else? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adopt Resolution Number 01-18, a resolution adopting the investment policy for Tuolton Valley Water District.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Doan, second by Commissioner Schmidt. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Pass is 4-0. Thank you very much. Last item on the agenda tonight is consider adopting Resolution Number 02-18, a resolution adopting a supplemental budget for the 2017 to 19 biennium to fund and authorize positions within the Willamette Water Supply Program.
So this is going to be a little bit of a tag-team presentation this evening, but the real gist...
No folding chairs.
The real gist is that as we've moved forward and continue to make progress, as you've seen over the last couple of years in terms of implementation of the Willamette Water Supply Program, we've, no surprise, identified that there are a couple of additional staff positions that are required to continue to keep the program team operating at peak efficiency and meeting all the demands that are being placed on them. In addition, as outlined in the WIF Commission agreement, we're now assuming additional operation and management responsibilities associated with becoming the managing agency of the WIF Commission. And so that too has some additional staff burdens. We've focused all of that staff within the program team under Dave's leadership, but obviously, to do that also requires some budget adjustments to be able to accommodate those additional staff positions. So basically, Paul is going to tee this up in terms of providing the overall summary of what's going on, Dave's going to talk about the staff positions, and then Paul's going to come back and talk more about the actual budget adjustment process and the net effect in terms of the supplemental budget. So with that, I am actually going to make an exit stage, right? And Paul, you can tee it up and take it away, guys.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you very much.
Have a safe flight.
President Burke, Commissioners, as Mark indicated, Dave will first present the Willamette Water Supply Program Staffing Plan. I will come back, talk about the supplemental budget, and then we have a proposed resolution for your consideration tonight.
Thanks, Paul. So this will look familiar. It was the summary of the information that I presented back at the November work session. And I talked about what the program does, and it's symbolized by these four boxes here. It's designing and building the infrastructure, what we typically think about in the program, which requires a lot of, obtaining a lot of approvals, real estate, anticipating and avoiding managing risks, controlling finances and schedule, and overall coordination of all of that. And that takes a team. This is the team that we have engaged right now at our program management office and the various functional groups that are engaged in that. And as Mark alluded to, we're taking on some new responsibilities in the program. We're taking on some of the management responsibilities for the Willamette intake facilities, Willamette River Water Coalition, the Willamette Water Supply System, and the managing agency administration of that. So what does a managing agency do for each of these? Summarized in kind of in this group of bullets here. Meetings, facilitations, records administration, responding to requests, and so on. There's a lot of management tasks associated with running any of these functions. As well, the program activities will continue to grow through 2024. Just looking at the current fiscal year, where our current fiscal budget of 51.6 million currently is going to grow over time to a peak, some more than 400% increase to fiscal year 2024. With our baseline 2.1 was estimated at 280.8 million, it's going to grow over time. We're going to have a lot more activity as soon as we have more construction projects underway. In addition, staffing changes will occur. It's a long program, so things will happen, and as it is, Nikki Iverson, who has been our permitting manager, will be transitioning off the program, and that's a position that we will have to backfill over the next six months or so. So with all of these changes and growth, we did a thorough review of all of our departments and functional groups, as I presented back in November, and we came up with this list of additional positions that we're going to need on the program as it grows over time. For these positions, we identified as being TVWD staff, the remainder will be provided from our consultant staff or program management team. On the TVWD staff, it's a deputy director, administrative assistant. Back in November, I had listed a permitting manager, we're changing that position title currently to a permitting supervisor, and a deputy engineering and construction manager, all of this to handle the additional workload and the staffing changes. The next steps that we're continuing to work through right now are refining these position descriptions, completing our definition of them, working through, confirming that they are TVWD positions, and then also going through the grade review process through human resources. And with that, I'll pass to Paul to talk about the supplemental budget process for all of this.
One question. What's the difference between a manager and a supervisor?
The difference is in the staffing under which they're in charge of. So typically, on our functional groups, like Mike Britch is our engineering and construction manager, and so he has quite a staff beneath him. With a supervisor, we're thinking either no or maybe one staff underneath that person.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions that I can answer?
So all this translates into dollars in a supplemental budget. I want to just spend a brief moment here talking about the details of the supplemental budget. First of all, Oregon law, ORS 294.305, I think, through 565, allows the district to adopt supplemental budget and to transfer appropriations from general operating contingency to another appropriation category by resolution of the board. And that's what the resolution that we're proposing tonight will do. The supplemental budget must be balanced. This is a requirement of Oregon law. That is, that there must be sufficient resources identified to meet the financial requirements of the supplemental budget. And as I indicated, the supplemental budget does require board action, and that's the proposed resolution that we have tonight. So the resources that we have identified for the supplemental budget, again, it must be balanced. The first set of resources we're identifying are sales to other funds, and this may sound somewhat complicated, but the district actually provides services to other funds, to the construction fund. Right now, the budget that Dave has, has two of the four positions already funded within the Willamette Water Supply Program Fund as capital outlay. At the time the budget was prepared, these were anticipated to be one, employ the city of Hillsborough, and we would fund that, we would be paying them for that. The other was through a consultant. So rather than fund those activities outside the district, we will actually bring the revenue back to the district's general fund to pay for those staff positions. The requirements will be an increase in personnel services. So in order to pay the folks, we will have to appropriate money as a personnel service category to fund the positions. And we'll also take a reduction in the district's general operating contingency. This table shows how it all lays out and the dollar amounts associated with each. So as we look at the resources over the two-year, the remaining of this fiscal year and the second year of our biennium, we're estimating sales to other funds to be $625,000. That includes all the labor costs, labor burden, as well as the indirect overhead costs that the district adds to the sales that we receive. On the requirement side, we estimate the total personnel services for the four positions, this is fully loaded, including all their costs, to be $896,000. We're asking a reduction in the general operating contingency of 271,000, which leaves the net requirements at 625. And this follows the district's current budget and accounting practices. Upcoming activities, this is first and solemn, it deals with the staffing requirements, but we also will need to propose a budget for the Willamette intake facilities that both Dave and Mark talked about earlier. That will require the district to present to you another supplemental budget. At that time, we'll be creating new funds for the Willamette intake facilities. They'll be very similar to what we do with the Willamette River Water Coalition or the WRWC. We'll have to provide appropriations within those new funds to authorize the expenditures, and we'll need to actually provide some appropriations within the district's general fund to pay the dues to that new fund. So we'll be coming back to the district for a supplemental budget, probably the March timeframe, to deal with that need. So our findings, the WESP Staffing Plan recommends four new positions. So, uh, our findings, uh, the WWSP Staffing Plan recommends four new positions, as Dave indicated. The new positions will be largely funded with the existing appropriations within the WWSP budget, that were identified as capital outlays. The district's financial position is strong and can support the new positions, and we recommend the adoption of Resolution zero-two-eighteen, a resolution adopting a supplemental budget to fund and authorize four positions within the WWSP, and I'm available to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions? Okay. Thank you very much. All for that. Uh, we'll entertain a motion to adopt Resolution number zero-two-eighteen, a resolution adopting a supplemental budget for the twenty seventeen to nineteen biennium to fund and authorize positions within the Willamette Water Supply Program.
So moved.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Bagnall. Second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Schmidt. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Passes four-zero. And seeing nothing else on the agenda tonight, without objection, I will adjourn the meeting. We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Have a good night, everybody.